All right, good evening. This is the Cortez City Council regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, and the time is 7:30 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, Cheryl, can we have the roll call?
Keith Offer?
Here.
De Haven?
Here.
Spruill?
Here.
Dobree?
Here.
Randall?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Medina?
Here. All right, do we have an approval of the agenda as presented, or any amendments that need to happen?
Madam Mayor, I move that council approve the agenda for September 24th, 2024, as presented.
Second.
All right, motion made by Dobree and seconded by De Haven? I think I heard three voices, but...
Lewis?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Keith Offer?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
De Haven?
Aye.
Spruill?
Yes.
Medina?
Aye. Okay, we're moving on to number two on our agenda, the Consent Agenda. The listing under Consent Agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. Either the public or council member may request that an item may be removed from the consent agenda at the time prior to council's vote. After reading the list, I will ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion. A, approval of the council's special meeting slash work session and agenda minutes for September 10th, 2024. B, approval of the expenditure list for September 24th, 2024. C, approval of a special event permit application for the Cortez Area Chamber of Commerce to host a business after-hours event on Thursday, October 10th, 2024, on the premises of Wade, of the Wade Agency located at 31 West Main Street, Cortez. D, approval of a renewal application for retail marijuana store slash retail marijuana cultivation facility for THA Corp., DBA The Herbal Alternative, located at 1531 Lebanon Road and 10194 Highway 491 Cortez. And E, or E, approval of a renewal hotel and restaurant liquor license application for Lounge &amp; Lizard, Inc., DBA Lounge &amp; Lizard, located at 2 and 4 West Main Street, Cortez. And F, approval of a renewal tavern liquor license application for the Purple Sage Ribco and Saloon LLC, DBA Purple Sage Ribco, located at 2591 East Main Street, Cortez. Would anyone like to see an item removed for discussion, or a motion to approve as presented?
I move that council approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Randall and seconded by Lewis?
Spruill?
Yes.
Randall?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
De Haven?
Aye.
Keith Offer?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye. Okay, we're gonna move on to number three on our agenda, public participation. There's no limit to the number of speakers, although a public comment will be held to an overall time limit of 30 minutes. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once, and may not cede time to another commenter. All right, we're gonna start with Amico South. And the microphone should turn on for you and automatically turn off at the three-minute mark. And you'll see a yellow light come on when you have a minute left, and then red when it's done.
Um, enjoy the...
Yeah.
Just...
Oh, is it green?
No.
All right. We'll start working out the kinks.
Okay.
Perfect.
Do I still need to state my name and address?
Yeah, start with the name and community you live in.
Amico South, 7127, Road 25.4. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for hearing my concerns. As a law-abiding citizen of Montezuma County, I feel it is imperative, it's my understanding that you will be, um, hearing an ordinance later this evening about, um, basically nullifying the state, um, carry laws in, in public government buildings. So, as a law-abiding citizen of Montezuma County, I feel it is imperative that you pass this ordinance, just as the county commissioners did. So, by nullifying the illegal law the state passed hindering our Second Amendment right to self-protection in public buildings, our buildings, you will only be hindering not only our Second Amendment right, but also our First Amendment right to free speech, because some law-abiding carriers will not step foot into this building to voice their concerns on future matters, or even possibly not even this matter, because we're not allowed to carry in public buildings. Gun-free zones only means that it's an optimal place for criminals, knowing that no one in that state, in that building can defend themselves and others. If you do not pass this ordinance and nullify the state's illegal law, you will only be hindering law-abiding citizens, because criminals do not abide by laws. They never do, or they would, wouldn't commit the crime. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Dennis Atwater?
Thank you for taking my comments. I prepared a statement. Um, my name is Dennis Atwater. I live at 20325 County Road 25 in Dolores, Colorado. I'm here to request that ordinance number 1328 be presented and adopted on first reading at this meeting tonight, and then move forward to the second and final reading on October 8th, at which time I encourage each of you to vote yes on the ordinance number 1328. And here's why. The state law creates additional gun-free zones, which in effect mandates places where law-abiding citizens have less protection from not just illegal use of guns, but other weapons or imminent immediate threats to life and limb. Two established facts to consider are, number one, approximately 97% of all mass public shootings take place in gun-free zones. Criminals do not care about gun laws or prohibitive signing. They do prefer soft targets, which they find in gun-free zones. Studies, and this is number two, studies indicate that firearms are used more than 2 million times a year for personal protection, and often protection of others who are in harm's way. Also, that the mere presence of a firearm without a shot being fired prevents crime in many instances. And so, in regard to these two established facts, I will refer to paragraph four of ordinance 1328, series 2024, and I'll quote it as, as is proposed in this ordinance, "Whereas pursuant to the city charter, the city, acting by and through its city council, has the authority and the duty to adopt and enforce regulations that foster the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens, and the protections of its citizens," end quote. So, when you consider those two facts, in the city charter, city council has the duty to adopt and enforce ordinance 1328, thereby fostering protection of its citizens and not lessening what current law allows. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atwater. I'd like to invite Michael Levy.
Can you hear me? Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Medina and council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Michael Levy. I live in 491, 491 East Coronado Avenue in Cortez. And, uh, I'm just speaking tonight regarding this ordinance, 1328, series 2024, regarding carrying firearms in city buildings pursuant to a senate bill. I am opposed to this. I don't think we need to have armed citizens in public buildings. I'm not saying that people may not be competent in their use of firearms, but it's a very difficult position to put yourself in. Uh, I've had a lot of experience with firearms. I've been around firearms all my life. I was a petty officer in the Navy. I was, I carried a 1911 Colt, uh, .45 as a petty officer on short patrol duty. I was on the sheriff's department. I was a special deputy. I did courtroom security, and I carried a Glock three caliber pistol with me. Uh, I was in the sheriff's posse, and I also carried a Glock pistol with me. And I did a lot of training with the sheriff's department and the posse, different scenarios of when it's safe to shoot, when it's not safe to shoot, and it's very difficult. Have you ever gone through any of these trainings? And I know some people have, and I'm sure some of them haven't, but it takes a split-second decision, which will affect your life and the person in front of that barrel, or innocent bystanders. And there's, I understand at the reading of this, that there's no competency exam, you know, for people carrying this firearm, say, in, in city council meeting. There, there may be people here tonight that are armed with loaded weapons, and they have a Second Amendment right to do that, but are they competent? Are they, would they be willing to single out the perpetrator if there's someone here threatening other people? Do they have that maturity? I don't think I would like that situation in city council. I was on city council for four years, and I felt safe with the chief here, with the officers in close contact. Thank you for...
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to invite Matt Warner up.
Hello, I'm here to speak on the ordinance 1328 regarding carrying firearm in city hall. I don't think it's an issue of carrying a firearm in city hall. Um, I know a few people that work here, and I want everybody that works here to feel safe in their work environment. What I think the issue is here is that if we get rid of the freedom to carry our firearms in public buildings that we, the people, are supposed to be in control of, that just gets rid of a little bit of freedom and a little bit more freedom, and pretty soon it's gonna turn into, we're not gonna be able to carry our firearms in the city limits. We don't need any more government control. There's already too much government control. Um, I guess that's really all I have to say. But I am in favor of the ordinance. We should be able to carry our firearms in our public office buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. It's good to be back. I would hope that common sense will prevail, and that the city council will not choose to opt out of the senate bill 24131. There's no need for citizens, um, to carry weapons. We have a reliable, uh, police force, that that's their duty, and ensuring the public safety is regarded as a trained service. I served on our council during the time when we were experiencing great stress from the pandemic. I showed you to think what might happen if ordinary citizens would have been allowed to carry guns in the city council chambers at that time. So, please consider. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Tim Krebs up.
Thank you. Am I on, really? It's all new to me. Oh, can you hear that? Yeah, this is quite new to me, but I just wanted to, uh, let you know, this is, uh, we're not living in the same world we used to live in, you know, 20 years, even 20 years ago or further, and it is very dangerous. You can see, in, in gun-free zones, that's where people get killed all the time, kids in schools, and, and all of, you know, courthouses, and wherever there is no guns at, and with, with responsible people carrying, you're protected up there. You're protected in here, in the whole building, and without it, a bad guy's gonna come in with a gun, you know, you're not gonna stop him. But if you don't, if you don't have anybody with guns, with, you know, a responsible person with a gun, you're not gonna stop him. He's gonna come in here and just kill as many as he wants to. And it's just something to think about, you know, I, I think, you know, I think it's, it's a very, very important decision to make, you know, because if you take it away, how are you gonna get it back? You know, this is our Second Amendment. We, we don't wanna lose that, and we don't wanna lose what little that we have here in this county, or in this state, in this city. And, and I just think that, that it's, it's really good to think about how much damage a person can do if there's not somebody around that's, that's gonna stop them. You know, we, we don't wanna kill people or anything like that, but we wanna stop them from doing bad, from hurting us, and that's, that's why people carry. That's why responsible citizens carry it, is to stop people from hurting other people and, and doing bad things. And that's about all I know what to say right now, but thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Mindy Nelson up.
Good evening, council. Every one of you swore to uphold and protect what we call the Constitution of the United States. The first ten amendments known collectively as the Bill of Rights offer specific civil protections of individual liberties and justice, and places restrictions on power of government in the United States. Amendment one, freedom of speech. Amendment two, the right of the people to keep and bear arms. SB 24131, gun-free zones will get people killed. We are home rule. When has a single concealed carry holder ever committed a crime in any public building? In fact, data shows that gun-free zones are turned into killing zones. Research and the statistics show that criminals intentionally choose these kill zones to commit violence have been proven over the last three decades. This leaves our young children and adults unprotected and defenseless, leaving the wide open to terrorists and psychologically disturbed killers. Here are the facts about deadly failure of gun-free zones. 98% of mass shootings occurred in gun-free zones between 1950 and 2020. FBI data reveals that concealed carry permits holders are not the problem, but they are part of the solution. Too many lives have been lost because murderous maniacs know that schools and other gun-free zones are soft targets. Those inside don't have the ability to protect themselves. In emergency situations, seconds, seconds matter, and well-trained, responsible gunners can save lives in an active shooter situation. Legislatures looking to pass gun-free must know whether or not gun-free zones pose a danger in the public by attracting killers who refer an unarmed victim pool, and should give serious considerations to the following propositions. First, however, well-intended gun-free zones do not work. While they might provide symbolic emotional comfort to those who fear firearms, they have no real-world practical effect, other than to encourage law-abiding armed citizens to stay away. That is, way over 98% of mass spotting happen in gun-free zones. Mass casualty shooters have overwhelmingly elected to carry out of their attacks in gun-free zones. Relative and all the other proposed solutions to the problems, mass public shootings and elimination of gun-free zones will comparatively simple and expensive. The elimination of gun-free zones may not prove to be defective answer, but the evidence strongly shows that it is far more effective. Otherwise, will be attempt the same old failed solutions over and over again. Gun-free zones get people killed. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel, can you just double-check if we have any more comment cards? Oh, please. I think we've got a few more minutes in the half hour. Okay. All right, Johnny Walker?
All right, thank you, council. Uh, yeah, my name is Jonathan Walker. I live at 310 North Washington Street here in Cortez. Uh, wanted to also address the, the ordinance, the state bill, um, is it 1328, 2024? Just thinking about this and hearing everyone tonight, um, I too am concerned about safety and safety in public spaces. I am not convinced at all that allowing firearms in public spaces is the way to do that. I know that, um, you know, thinking of, if there is, you know, if something happened right now, how would people react? And I, I, you know, hearing Mike Levy talking about the extensive training that goes into that, and some people have been through that training, but I have a, I have a feeling that for most people, that, um, in an environment like that where, uh, there's a lot of adrenaline, there's a lot of confusion, a lot of chaos, there's more opportunity for innocent people to get hurt. I'm, I'm concerned about the safety and welfare of our police force. If there are a lot of, a lot of people with good intentions, um, but I don't think that good intentions without proper training, um, I just feel like that's a recipe for, uh, for disaster. I'm not against the Second Amendment at all, um, but I do feel, feel like there's a time and a place for everything, so, uh, I feel like this is not something that the city should opt out of. That's all I had to say, so thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right, we'll conclude then our public comment section, and we'll move on to our, on our agenda to four. Four on our agenda is presentations. We have none tonight, so we'll move on to number five, public hearings. Uh, 5A is the second reading of ordinance number 1327. It's an ordinance approving the 40-year land lease agreement between the City of Cortez Municipal Airport and Eli Tomac for the purpose of hangar construction, presented by Jeremy Patton, our airport director.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. So, yes, again, this is the second reading and, and, uh, public hearing for the proposal of an ordinance between the city and Eli Tomac for hangar construction at the Cortez Municipal Airport. Um, as a review from the first reading, Mr. Tomac had approached the, the airport in November of 2023 with intention to build a hangar. Since then, he's been diligently, diligently pursuing all of the, you know, the requirements, as am I with the FAA and, and the powers that be to get the exhibits put together and, and quotes on utilities and things like that. So, the proposed location is hangar lot north eight, that's on the north stretch of the airport. Um, as you, as you get into the airport, it's the first row on the left. Um, and the proposed structure is a 60 by 70 hangar, uh, for personal use, totaling 4,200 square feet, um, and an apron access to the taxiway. Now, the total leased area includes building separation for the easements on each side and parking on the back of the street side, comes out to approximately 7,600 square feet. Um, and you guys have in the packet an aerial photograph of the exhibit showing the hangar. As far as fiscal impact for the remainder of the year, if this, it goes into effect October 1st to the end of the year, we realize about $777 at a rate of 41 cents per square foot, uh, from 25 and beyond. Rates will be adjusted per CPI, but we should see approximately 3,200 a year in land lease revenue. So, with that, I'm recommending that we approve on second and final, final reading, ordinance number 1327, series 2024, the ordinance approving a 40-year land lease between the City of Cortez and Eli Tomac for the purpose of his hangar construction, um, with a motion that city council approve again on second and final reading, this ordinance 1327, series 2024, barring any questions.
I didn't see an aerial image or a site plan in, in the packet.
Oh, it's in, sorry, it was in the first reading.
Oh, okay.
Packet, yeah.
Okay, I know, I remember.
Yeah, this one has the ordinance and the lease agreement exhibit.
Okay. Any questions from council before we invite the applicant up? Okay, would the applicant like to speak?
You wanna add anything, Eli? Mr. Tomac? You good? Okay.
Okay. All right, then we'll, um, open this, uh, public hearing up to public comment. Would anyone in the audience like to make a public comment on this subject? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment or hearing portion of this. Any other discussion from council or questions before we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that council approve on second and final reading ordinance number 1327, series 2024. ordinance number thirteen twenty-seven, series twenty twenty-four, an ordinance approving a forty-year land lease agreement between the City of Cortez and Eli Tomac for the purpose of hangar construction.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Keith Hoffer. Randall. Dobree.
Aye.
De Haven.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Spruill.
Yes.
Keith Hoffer.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to six on our agenda, unfinished business. We have none tonight. So, we'll move on to number seven, new business. Uh, seven A is airline terminal lease agreement for four years uh, between the City of Cortez and Key Lime Air, doing business as the Denver Air Connection. Presented by Jeremy Patton, our airport director.
Thanks again, Madam Mayor and City Council. So, yes, uh, we are currently in a two-year agreement with Denver Air Connection. We entered that agreement in October twenty twenty-two after we replaced Boutique Air onto the essential air service contract. Um, it's, we are, back in March, we already started reviewing with the DOT proposals on this contract. And we had two submittals between Denver Air Connection and Advanced Air. With the experience we've been having with Denver Air, being in Cortez's history at least, probably the most reliable service, um, overall. We, uh, we opted to request a five-year agreement with DOT, knowing that they generally give two- or four-year contracts. And, um, that's essentially what happened. And in July, they issued the letter of authorization for the essential air service contract. Um, so on our end, we enter into these lease agreements for their use, uh, or their surface use agreements essentially, but their use of the terminal space and the airline ground support equipment area for their operations. And this is at a, so first, per our schedule of fees and charges, the town, terminal lease counter space rents for about twenty-six dollars and sixty cents per square foot, as we adopted last year with the schedule of fees and charges. Um, that equates to a monthly rate of three thousand thirty-five per month. The current rate was about twenty-six hundred a month in that two-year contract, so we'll see a little bit increased revenue. Um, and then we also capture landing fees for the airlines separate from our other landing fee collection service. We bill them with their lease agreement, and that rate starts year one at two fif, two dollars and fifty cents per thousand pounds of their max landing weight. Um, the Metro liners are about twelve thousand to fourteen thousand pounds in that, in that range, um, depending on their capacity or their loads. Um, and, and so we capture that landing fee every time they land, and that goes into our landing fee revenue of the enterprise. Uh, year two, it goes up to, uh, two seventy-five, and it goes up a quarter for the next four years. Um, so with that, we will see over the, this contract period about a hundred and forty-nine thousand in rent and about two hundred and forty-five thousand in landing fees just from the airline. Um, this is a signatory agreement with their service. Um, with this, staff recommends council approve the airline airport agreement for a four-year lease agreement with Key Lime Air Corporation, DBA Denver Air Connection. And I move that City Council approve the, uh, the agreement as read. Barring any questions.
Um, I have a question unless other council members do as well. Okay. The, you know, 'cause usually at the end of the year, we redo our fee schedule. Is it, that won't affect this, or is that?
So, we.
Agreed upon a price here.
Right, yeah, the idea is that, you know, they're, we're locking them in at that monthly rate. Um, we, we do our hangar leases, uh, per, we. Um, the agreements between the airlines, they, they usually kick it back and they say, you know, hey, we're, you know, this, our rate's gonna go up substantially, you know, at that rate. But our terminal counter space rate, we re, we readjusted. They were, we were actually charging about, I think, fourteen something, fourteen cents for that counter space, which was, you know, that was years past that, at that rate. And that's the industry standard. So, I, we, when we did the fees, schedule of fees and charges, we implemented a raise of the terminal counter space, and that affected the TSA agreement, airline staff. And then if a car rental comes in, we, we brought that rate up to like more of a modern standard. Um, so, we're, we're increasing their landing fees quite a bit with the new landing fee rates that we implemented. Um, so we, with the last negotiation with the Denver Air, they asked us just to keep that, the lease, the terminal space rate, what it was, and we capture more revenue off the landing fees. Um, and we agreed that that would work, and, um, that's kinda what we signed in. But this implements that increase of the counter space, if that makes sense. So, it's, it's quite a bit more than it was. Um, but we're seeing the escalation of revenue in their landing fees.
Great. Um, I know it was, uh, um, hopeful to get the five-year contract, but I'm glad that the DOT agreed with our recommendation and at least gave us the four-year. I think Denver Air Connection has been super reliable. I flew with them just two weeks ago, um, and the parking lot looks great. Thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we're getting there.
But, um, yeah, just appreciate all your work with this and, uh, relationships, so.
Yep, and just for, just real quick background, the reason they're not giving five years is a lot to do with the, we're in an election year and the, the way the budget's panning out. They, they, they're not issuing five years anywhere. They're sticking to their two or four years. Um, two is generally for new contracts or volatile carriers that they're kinda seeing prove themselves. Um, and thankfully, we, you know, not to disparage anybody else, but the other carriers that have put in the last couple of years are not doing too great in their communities. So, we, we, we're lucky. We really, we've scored pretty well despite not having jets yet. We, we've, we're, we're faring very well with them being here.
Great.
Yep.
Um, and then also, I noticed that they are gonna, um, implement a fee for checked bags.
Did see that.
But it's, it's only ten dollars, I think.
They're not raising their ticket prices, but they're gonna capture some checked bags. They're having problems, people take advantage of the, of, you know. Yeah, just trying to sneak stuff through and it, it creates delays in, in checking, so they're just gonna start implementing a fee and hopefully deter some of that.
Okay.
But they're gonna keep their ticket prices where they are. They're not raising those by much.
Great, they're pretty reasonable, especially if you plan ahead.
Right. Yep.
So, and that, that fee starts October first, I think.
Correct. Yep. And that's everywhere, not just here.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions from counsel?
I move that City Council approve the airline airport agreement, a four-year lease agreement with Key Lime Air, doing business as Denver Air Connection.
Second.
Motion made by Robert, or Dobree and seconded by Keith Hoffer. Dobree.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Spruill.
Yes.
Keith Hoffer.
Aye.
De Haven.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, counsel.
All right, we're gonna move on to seven B on our agenda. Acceptance of bid by Advanced Inspection Solutions LLC for certified coating inspection services. Presented by Brian Peckins, our Director of Public Works.
Madam Mayor, City Council, the City of Cortez Public Works Department is seeking certified coating inspection services for the rehabilitation of a drinking water clarifier structure. The work includes inspecting, consulting services, and inspection reporting on the clarifier rehab project. The City of Cortez Public Works Department put out a request for proposal for certified coating inspection services for the clarifier rehab project. The request for proposal was advertised on the city's website, BidNet, over three hundred contacts, and in the Cortez Journal. The bid opening was held on August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, with only one bid being received from Advanced Inspection Solutions at six hundred dollars per inspection with a not-to-exceed estimate of forty-six thousand two hundred dollars. AIS is qualified to perform the necessary work and will meet our needs at the lowest price for certified coating inspection services. They have done this type of work for the city in the past by performing coating inspections on all three water storage tanks. All monies for inspection services have been budgeted in the twenty twenty-four Waterfund Capital Projects. Staff recommends that council accept the bid proposal from Advanced Inspection Solutions in the amount of six hundred dollars per inspection with an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand two hundred and authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign a contract for the services. Subject to any questions?
I have a question. Sue, can you explain to me, do we have to have these inspections done every two weeks? Or how does this work? What is this, what does this look like? Because it looks like when we like break it out, it works out to twenty-six times a year, you know, seventy-seven.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let our water.
How does that work?
Let our water superintendent explain that.
Good evening, counsel. Um, so these inspection services are for the, uh, the services provided are, uh, so they'll do the metal blasting, and the, they'll inspect the metal surfaces to make sure they're getting the profile on the metal. And then when they do the coating, they'll inspect the coating. These have to be done at different increments of the project, and they're dependent on weather when they have to do them. So, it could be anywhere from twenty to seventy inspections. That's why there's such a high range there. But it's just for the duration of the project.
And how long is that duration, or are we looking at right now?
The project is to take place, it starts October twenty-eighth this year, and it'll be, uh, finished date of March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Yep.
Where is this company based out of?
They're local. Uh, they used to, for us, I think he's out of, in Monizuma Creek now.
Okay, so not afar trout.
Nope, they're local.
Great.
Yeah, that's why we didn't have any other bids, 'cause everybody else is around Denver area, so they couldn't beat the price.
All right, any other questions from counsel, or do we have a motion?
I move that counsel accept the bid proposal from Advanced Inspection Solutions LLC at its price of six hundred dollars per inspection with an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand two hundred dollars and authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign a professional services agreement with AIS for certified coating inspection services.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Keith Hoffer. Lewis.
Aye.
De Haven.
Aye.
Randall. Keith Hoffer.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Spruill.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye. Thank you, Brian and Randall.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to seven C on our agenda. First reading of ordinance number thirteen twenty-eight, series twenty twenty-four, presented by Patrick Coleman, our city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and counsel. Uh, as, as you may have heard during some of the previous public comment, legislature adopted Senate Bill twenty-four, one thirty-one, which is codified as CRS Section eighteen twelve, one oh five point three. The new law places additional restrictions on certain areas that the statute describes as sensitive places. And as that applies to the City of Cortez, it includes the council chambers and the area, the, the building in which the city manager's office is located in. Uh, it also applies to the municipal court area. And I, I would point out that the, the new statute, uh, does not modify statutes that were already in place that prohibited firearms in the municipal court itself and around election offices and polling places, which would restrict, uh, certain areas of the building, primarily the clerk's office, and then within a hundred feet of the ballot box that is on the west side of the building. Uh, but the, the, the statute does prohibit open and concealed carry in those sensitive areas. The statute included a provision that essentially allows local governments to opt out from the provisions of the statute. And in order to do that, an ordinance is necessary to be adopted by the, the city council. At the last work session, council asked that I prepare a draft ordinance that would allow council to opt out. And that is what is for you tonight on first reading. Uh, the council has the option of, uh, presenting this on first reading and voting to either continue it on to second reading and a public hearing, at which time you would be required to listen to public comment and, uh, deliberate prior to voting whether you approve the ordinance or not. Or you have the option tonight to vote not to move the ordinance forward to second reading. And if there are other provisions that the council wants to see in the ordinance, uh, say, a hybrid version or a modified version, that is, that is possible. Rather than kind of having me create a half a dozen different versions and hoping that I guessed right on what, what you all wanted, I would suggest that if, if that is the desire of the council, perhaps another work session to analyze what, what variations might be appropriate. Uh, you could opt out of a portion of the existing statute, but keep a portion of it. And, uh, I won't presume to guess whether any or all of that would be, uh, the will of the council. So, uh, I would suggest if, if you wanna go that direction, perhaps another work session might be appropriate. But in any event, what's before you tonight is this ordinance on first reading. And, uh, you'll need to determine whether or not, uh, it is introduced and a public hearing is set for, uh, second reading consideration. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I, I would like to reiterate or, or clarify the fact that if we do nothing by default, the state will enact a no carry. Is that correct?
It, it's already enacted, so technically.
We must go to second reading to opt out, should we choose to opt out.
That is correct.
I have a question about buildings that it covers. So, you mentioned City Hall, basically. What about the Service Center, the Library, the Rec Center? And, uh, this, I guess, what other buildings do we have? The Welcome Center?
Yeah, for, for city, for the municipality, for the City of Cortez, the sensitive places are, uh, the chambers or galleries of the governing body, which we're sitting in now. Uh, any other room where the governing body may meet. So, if the council meets in some other room in this building or elsewhere, the, the prohibition of concealed or open carry would apply. It applies to the official offices of city council, which technically you don't have offices here. But it also applies to the offices where the chief executive officer, which is the city manager, uh, where, where his office is located. So, uh, basically, only City Hall, which includes the municipal court, uh, would be subject to the existing ordinance. And, uh, again, the, the, uh, inside the municipal court and the, uh, election-related portions of the building were already, uh, considered no carry zones. And that, that doesn't change with the enact, enacting of the new statute.
Patrick, I have a question. It also covers licensed daycare centers, is that correct?
Yes, and, and, uh, the, the, uh, if, if we have those, that, that, that is correct. It, it applies to those places as well.
So, if we have those within our city limits, they would follow our... Or, or do they have an option to opt out?
No, they're, only the local governing body, which locally is the county commissioners and the city council has the ability to opt out. And it applies within your jurisdiction. So, any buildings that are listed as sensitive places in your jurisdiction, in this case, within the city limits, uh, would be subject to your opt out if, if you chose to approve the ordinance.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Coleman, I, I, I'm requesting a little bit of clarification. Are there not ordinances in place that protect schools and the like?
Yes, and, and there are some ordinances that already apply similar to the municipal court prohibition and the election office prohibition. So, it's, uh, it, it does add some additional sensitive places, is the term they use. But you're, you're correct, the, the, the schools are. But you're correct, the schools are already... And I'm not sure about whether the current law applies to daycare centers. I mean, when I say current law, the law prior to the adoption of Senate Bill twenty-four one thirty-one. And I apologize, I'm not sure whether the daycare centers come under the school definition.
But just to clarify, so if we opted out, that would mean we're making that decision for daycares in our community as well?
Yes.
Okay. But I think that's a good clarification, that this is addressing that right now it's prohibited in just these chambers where we meet administrative office and then kind of reiterating the court and elections.
Yes, but it doesn't apply to the public works or the general services building. Obviously, the police department has their own restrictions and you can't carry in the police department.
Okay. All right, I guess any more questions for Pat or do we have?
Yeah, I had a question for Pat. Can you clarify again, looking at SB twenty-four dash one thirty-one, it says the act permits a local government to enact a law permitting carrying at local government buildings included in the act. So anything that we did would not affect those other non-local government spaces? Basically, anything that isn't a, we can only opt out of Cortez buildings, the city of Cortez buildings. Is that correct?
Well, and actually, I apologize, I don't have the actual Senate Bill one thirty-one pulled up, but you may be correct on that, in which case it would not apply to the daycare centers. I can confirm that. If you want, I can pull that up.
I think another interesting question that would run along those lines are, are there other ordinances in place or other legislation in place that protects daycare centers? I think that's a very hot emotional topic and if you, and that needs to be pulled out of our consideration if we're... Reasonable decision. While he does that, may I go ahead and speak? I have a few comments I'd like to make. Is that all right? Good time? Okay. So I'd like to speak regarding this proposed ordinance, number one three two eight, series twenty twenty-four, in the state of, excuse me, in the city of Cortez. So the, one thing I'd like to say is that one thing that I've learned about being on this council and I continue to learn is that we have to have extremely hard conversations and we have to do it with dignity and with respect for each other. And we need to keep that in mind as we move forward. Part of what we do here is we hear ideas and we share ideas. And part of what I'm going to say today is probably going to upset some of you, but I'm asking that you not take it personally, but I do believe that I'm representing a proportion of our citizenry that needs to have this spoken about. So I believe that the Senate Bill twenty-four one thirty-one that was passed by the state legislature was a well-meaning legislation. I believe that everybody up here on this dais wants us all to feel safe. And I believe that we want to avoid any tragic events that could befall us. I believe that most of us here would like to believe that we shouldn't need to live in a world where people would want to carry a firearm for self-protection. I mean, that's something that we would all want, but I'm not, I don't believe that's the case in the world that we live in. This is a very emotional issue for many people, those who are pro-gun right and for those who are anti-gun. So we have to recognize that you have a right to your feelings, just as much as other people has a right to our rights that were given to us by our constitution. So I think we need to look at this very level-headedly if possible. And I'd like to approach that by looking at facts versus feelings. So the first fact I'd like to bring up is that we have current laws and we have a multitude of current laws that are in place. We have laws that prohibit firearms within a hundred feet of polling locations, ballot boxes, in a court facility, in schools, in post offices, and in other federal buildings. Those laws are already in place. This not law is not, is just adding to the pile of laws that are in place. We have federal laws, including the Gun Free School Zones Act of nineteen ninety. We have the Gun Free Schools Act of nineteen ninety-four. We literally have hundreds of statutes that prohibit murder, assault with a deadly weapon, terrorism, and other foul acts. But despite all of these laws and despite the fact that we currently have thousands of gun-free zones in place in this United States of ours, we continue to suffer from gun violence and mass shootings. Accepting State Bill twenty-four one thirty-one does absolutely nothing, nothing, to make this building any safer for us. It's a political statement, making this building a gun-free zone. It makes those of us who frequent the building soft targets. It negates the constitutional Second Amendment rights of all of us. It revokes the privilege of lawful Colorado concealed handgun permit holders who visit the building for work or for business. Those are facts. This is a second fact. Gun-free zones. I read, I received an email today, as many of us did, from a very eloquent individual in the community that stated that it was obvious to her that the state bill made her and her neighbors and her colleagues feel safer. I'm glad for her that it makes her feel safer. I don't want her to feel threatened. But the facts are this. During nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and eighteen, ninety-seven percent of the mass shootings that occurred, occurred in gun-free zones. That's fact and it was obtained from the Crime Prevention Research Center. Mass shooters overwhelmingly choose gun-free zones because having a gun-free zone creates a victim pool of unarmed soft targets who don't have the ability to protect themselves. Evil is not deterred by signs or proclamations, and it can happen anywhere. The only thing that stops evil is good. The last three largest mass shootings that happened in the United States were in Las Vegas in twenty seventeen, at the Pulse Night Club in Orlando in twenty sixteen, and in the Virginia Tech University in twenty oh seven. All three of those occurred in gun-free zones. The third fact I want to bring up is that we need to harden our targets. Now, this is going to be disputed by some, and I'm going to ask you to bear with me on it when hear this out. There are currently in the United States, twenty states that allow teachers to be armed. Now, this means that they have designated programs in place. These people are trained, they're registered, et cetera. They have policies and procedures in place. In those states, in those twenty states, there's been no school shootings at those designated locations. There's been no accidental shootings or incidents connected to those armed teachers. And this is all done, all produced in a study of January twenty twenty that was put out by Lohan Lott. There's been other incidences in schools that weren't regulated and schools that did not have legally or quote authorized people carrying, but not in those schools. So in June of this year, on the eighteenth, the Monizuma County Commissioners voted to pass ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-four, and they opted out of the state legislation. They upheld the rights of the citizens and the employees to lawfully possess firearms in government buildings that were owned by Monizuma County. They listened to their constituents. The fact number four is in regards to Colorado concealed handgun permit. This is also referred to as being lawful concealed carry. These permits are issued by the Monizuma County Sheriff. They are only issued after an individual goes through a background check, including fingerprinting. They attend an eight-hour course in which time that the course is conducted by a certified firearms instructor by the state of Colorado. And they demonstrate proficiency in gun safety and gun handling and practices with their handgun. They demonstrate it. And they're awarded, granted, after they pass that, a concealed carry permit. This is a legal permit for them to carry. Colorado has sixteen percent of its registered, excuse me, of its residents that have concealed carry permits. That's in the entire state of Colorado. So that includes everything on the other side of the state and more populous areas. I suspect that here in our area, there are, I don't know for a fact, I just don't know how many here are in the city of Cortez or are in the county, but I suspect it may be higher. Legally concealed carrying permit individuals stopped thirty-one mass shootings since twenty and twenty in a published study on June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. The rights that are granted to permit holders who may be citizens and city employees, including the right of self-defense, should remain intact when they visit and work in city buildings. That's an opinion, not a fact. The fifth fact is this. As council members here on this dais, we have a responsibility to our constituents. We took an oath of office in which we promised to support the Constitution of the United States, including the Second Amendment, and that includes the right to keep and bear arms. Personal feelings may move you to not exercise your constitutional right to bear arms. That's up to you. That's your right, you don't have to execute it. But I don't believe that we have the moral authority to remove or restrict the constitutional rights of law-abiding citizens of this city, that we swore an oath that we would uphold and support that same constitution. Opting in or supporting to default on Senate Bill twenty-four one thirty-one means that all the members on this dais, with all due respect, would be demonstrating disregard for the facts presented to you in favor of your feelings. You'd be disregarding your oath of office in favor of your feelings. You'd be disregarding the Constitution of the United States in favor of your feelings. You'd be disregarding the safety of your constituents and your city employees and given their God-given right to self-defense in favor of your feelings. And you'd also be disregarding your constitutional Second Amendment rights of the citizens that you represent. Opting out of Senate Bill twenty-four one thirty-one and voting in favor of ordinance number one three two eight, series twenty twenty-eight, would demonstrate your support for the fundamental mental right of self-defense, for the exercise of home rule for the city of Cortez, to recognize and opt out of a redundant, ineffective, and politically inspired piece of legislation. The Constitution of the United States includes the Second Amendment rights of citizens of Cortez to lawfully keep and bear arms while preserving those same rights for those who would choose not to exercise them. I appreciate your time. I appreciate your hearing my opinion and the facts.
All right, do we have any other council members who would like to?
Madam Chair, if I could clarify, Councilmember Dobree is correct that the opt-out provision only applies to three areas: this chamber, any other room in which council is meeting, and the executive offices of council and the chief executive. So it does not apply, the council does not have the authority to change any regulations relating to the daycare centers.
Okay, I think that's a good distinction. So really, when people are mentioning soft targets, those soft targets are us and the people sitting over there. And so we are really making a decision on our safety and their safety. This does not include the safety of the rest of the staff. Those are different areas. And, you know, I feel like we've kind of addressed safety and having Chief Knuckles attend every single one of our meetings in the last four years. And we've also had several other officers come if we have a more contentious topic to just kind of help alleviate tension and create that safeguard for when things get heated in a more well-attended meeting. So I feel like we've kind of addressed safety and the other things we've done, so just wanted to share my piece in that.
Yeah, I feel the same way since we've had our first discussion. I do not believe more guns in public and sensitive spaces will lead to safer outcomes for us or our community. We have trained officials in these spaces and other protective measures. In addition, I do not believe true democracy and open discourse can be held by us or our citizens when guns and other forms of weapons, which can be perceived as intimidation, are allowed to be present. Council chambers and City Hall is an important place for citizens to freely speak, and I know many would be uncomfortable stating opposing opinions to openly armed individuals. I do not see this as taking away rights. I see this as defending people's rights and particularly our constitutional rights to freedom of speech, because we can't have a truly open and free democracy. I've had the privilege of going to many places and I've noticed that the less freedom a country has, the more guns that I see present in public, and that's not something that I want to see here. You can call me a soft target, but I don't feel soft. I refuse to live my life in fear. We take risks with every day that we cannot mitigate. Every time I drive here, I could die. It's just part of being alive. So I feel there's no need to opt out of this, and I feel safe and secure in this building, and I feel safe and secure stating my own opinions and listening to others without armed members of the public present.
I think it's a feel-good ordinance. I think it tries to make the people feel safe. When policymakers consider enacting laws that significantly restrict the ability of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms, the people most affected are not the criminals who won't be deterred by one more law telling them to behave. The people most affected are those who ready and willing to defend themselves and others from criminals. We must continue to ensure that we are able to do so. The statements we heard earlier about being a soft target, but we're afraid that somebody's in the audience with a carried concealed weapon and they may shoot someone. Well, that person walking through the door with a gun could shoot lots of someones if there's no one to protect the rest of you. Our chief is fantastic, he can do a good job, but he needs all the help he can get. We don't need to depend on the police for our defense. We need to defend ourselves. And as my councilman to my left said, she feels safe here, I do too. And as my councilman to my left said, she feels safe here, I do too. I feel safe. I don't know if someone in here is carrying a gun or not, but I feel safe in that knowing that if they are, I want them on my side, and I don't want the bad guy coming through the door and shooting up council members, and there's nothing we can do about it.
I've heard people speak tonight, and they say that gun-free zones are targets for mass shooters. I disagree with that, and I think if you look at the research, it shows that they don't select a gun-free zone, they select a location, a location that maybe is their school where they've been bullied, or it's a location at their work where they've been fired. So to say mass shooters are targeting gun-free zones, I think that's a false statement. You know, most of the research shows that, you know, the individual is motivated by hate, a perceived conflict, or interpersonal conflict with someone. So I don't buy that mass-free shooting location being selected out. The other thing is, if we look, what I've heard tonight, it sounds like the more of us that carry firearms, the safer we'll be. And I'm not just talking here, I'm talking in the United States. So we are a country that has more guns than any other country. We're also a country that has one of the highest fatalities and homicides with guns. So, you know, I think where more guns are coming into the equation, the more volatility and risk there is for someone getting hurt.
I agree with a lot of what's been said, and one of the things that I'd like to start by saying is that the internet is a really fantastic place, and we can garner a lot of really great information, and we can essentially find a study for or against on any topic if we just do enough digging around. The one thing I learned today, and the thing I guess I really don't appreciate, is that the use of Facebook to basically outline our entire argument for or against something for the public before the first reading is even given, and I don't think that that's a good procedure, I don't think that that's something that city councils should do. I think that this is the proper format, and I think that the citizens should, if they're interested, come and listen to all sides and stay, you know, and give their opinion as well. But I would just say that I was very disappointed to see that today on Facebook, and I don't feel like that's a place where we should begin to govern. So I'm hoping that that's not how we're going to do things moving forward. And I have to completely agree with what Bill just said. As someone who was a teacher for thirty years, you know, the first twenty, twenty-five years, I was in what was quote-unquote a soft target situation. It was only at the end of my career that I felt like there was some imminent sort of a threat, and that's when we actually did have, you know, armed guards. That's when we had lots of different things, when we weren't quote-unquote a soft target. And when I was at Southwest Open School, which is very much an open school, if you've ever been there, very much an open campus, one of the things that we talked about was we talked about time and place, and one of our speakers tonight talked about that too. So guns currently are not allowed in schools, hospitals, banks, universities, and even if you go to the casino, guns are not allowed. So if there are laws, there are rules that are out there, and if this is quote-unquote redundant, then I don't really see the harm in saying no. I'd also just like to mention, I guess piggyback a little bit off of what Bill was saying about that myth of soft targets. I think really what we've seen is intentionally targeted locations, and it's due to some sort of an issue, like school bullying, workplace violence, we've all heard the, you know, post office shootings, et cetera. I think that some of these are racially motivated. I think that the Pulse nightclub, you know, we're going to hit a gay bar because we don't like homosexuals, for example. There are lots of reasons, but I have to really push back on the idea that I'm a gunman, so I'm just going to pick the very first soft target that's closest to me, or the first one that I can think of, and I'm going to hit that target. I think that what happens is you have someone who's really disgruntled, and they're taking it out in a really unfortunate way. So I have to agree with Bill and what some of the other folks up here have said.
Robert, anything to share?
Sure. So we've heard people, both in the crowd and on this dais, talk about feeling safe. I don't see how this law makes anyone safer. I felt the same amount of safety before this law existed as I do currently, and I think as a council and particularly as a state legislature, when interacting near constitutional rights in the Bill of Rights, should be very careful and make sure that there is a compelling interest to a law, and I don't see that in this case. I don't think that this is solving a problem that we see in our community. I don't see that we're seeing concealed carry permitted people creating problems in our city buildings. So I don't, yeah, I don't see a reason not to opt out of this law.
Thank you. All right, I think we've heard from a member of council member. Do we have a motion to move forward, or?
I move that council approve on first reading Ordinance Number Thirteen Twenty Eight, Series Twenty Twenty-Four, an ordinance concerning the carrying of firearms in city buildings pursuant to Senate Bill Twenty Four One Thirty-One, and set the ordinance for a second reading and public hearing on October eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Motion made by Spruill and seconded by Randall. Dehaven?
No.
Dobree?
Aye.
Keefather?
No.
Randall?
Aye.
Lewis?
No.
Spruill?
Yes.
Medina?
No.
All right, so the motion fails, and the ordinance will not be carried to a second reading and a public hearing. But I want to thank the audience for coming and sharing your opinions, and I want to be clear that this particular ordinance is not moving forward. That doesn't mean that a hybrid one can't be introduced, or that sometime down in the future that the will of the council can change, or a new council can make a new decision. But today, we've made a decision on this, and we thank you for being here, and we're going to move on. So, thank you. All right, number eight on our agenda is draft resolutions. We have none. So number nine is a city attorney report.
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right. Number ten, city manager report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. The following is my report for the current term. The Cortez Recreation Center is scheduled for a week-long closure on November tenth through the seventeenth of this year to perform facility-wide maintenance, employee training, and new software installation, and we're already communicating with the public on that, and more will be forthcoming, but we're just trying to give advance warning on that. Next, the city council Twenty Twenty-Five Budget Workshop is slated for this coming Thursday, September twenty-sixth, from eight-thirty a.m. to four-thirty p.m. in this room at Cortez City Hall. We'll be reviewing and discussing the proposed fiscal year Twenty Twenty-Five budget. Next, the interviews for the four library director finalists will take place Thursday, October third. A meet-and-greet with the public is scheduled for Wednesday, October second, from five to six-thirty p.m. in this room also. We anticipate having four candidates. After speaking to the recruiter today, we have four very solid candidates if they will accept and choose to come, and we have one alternate that should one drop out. So I'm pretty excited about the quality of candidates we have coming in. Next, the recycling services have resumed in Cortez. The curbside pickup is underway right now since August twenty-second, and then the recycling drop-off of the service center was reopened on September sixteenth. That concludes my report, pending any questions.
When the public comment section for it was opened?
After Thursday, so I'll have to talk to Kelly to make sure, but generally, we'll try to get that out the next day. We'll try to make any adjustments on Thursday and then get that out for public comment.
Okay, yeah, so our budget will be open to the public as early as Friday, the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, if it's not Friday, it'll be Monday for sure.
Okay, then we encourage everyone in the public to please look at our budget, provide your comments, and just kind of help us understand what the priorities are from the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to eleven on our agenda. Eleven A is the mayor's report on workshop. All right, we had Shaq Powers, the regional project manager with Region Nine Economic Development District, present to us on Senate Bill Twenty Four Dash One Seventy-Four Housing Needs Plan. So this is a bill that passed this summer where it's stating that every community that's over a thousand in population is required to have a housing needs assessment and then a housing action plan every six years. Some questions we had was, is there funding behind this? There are some that the state has set aside, but that's probably a small amount that's not going to support all of municipalities and counties. There is, cities and counties can partner together, and the clock starts on the six-year timeframe on December twenty-seventh, or sorry, December first, twenty twenty-seven. And the city of Cortez did recently do a housing needs assessment, so we would be required to do one sooner than six years from now. So, and there were other questions, I'm sorry if I missed the answers to that. But we'll move on to other board reports. We can start with Mr. Dobree.
I was unable to attend the Mesa Verde Country Board Meeting because I was out of town, but the report that I have and from email, Brian, the director, presented a budget for Twenty Twenty-Five at that meeting, and I think it was a reasonable and positive budget. That's all I have, thank you.
We had a library board meeting last week, mostly to get the new board members together and go over where we're at in the hiring process and the plan for interviews, and like Drew just stated, we've got some good applicants, and we're excited to move forward with that process soon.
Great.
The golf advisory board was set to meet this September twenty-seventh. We have several key people being absent, and that will be postponed until October fourth. That'll be at seven a.m. at the golf course clubhouse.
I attended the Montezuma County Homeless Prevention Coalition meeting, just to update council members to make sure that everybody's kind of on the same page. The Day Use Center that is in operation is showing an uptick in individuals that they have served in the month of September, from September first to September twentieth, they served a hundred and eight individuals, which is an increase even from the full month of August. The lowest month that they've had since opening was in June with forty-five, so they're up to a hundred and eight right now. The by-name list for active homeless has dropped somewhat in September to a hundred and ninety-nine, but that only included until the twentieth. The bridge is planning to open on October the twenty-second. One of the major projects that the coordination system is working on right this point in time is gathering information about how many people we actually have who are unhoused in the county. They're having quite a bit of difficulty getting real numbers, it's kind of like smoke, so they're trying to coordinate a little bit better with the Day Center Navigators, Access Street Outreach if possible, Graces and Hopes Kitchen, and of course, the Day Use Center.
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right. All right, we're going to move on to number twelve on our agenda, other items of business. We've got an executive session tonight, so if someone wants to read the motion for that.
Madam Mayor, I move that council convene into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators concerning the possible purchase of real property pursuant to CRS Section Two Forty-Six Dash Four Oh Two Four E.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Lewis. Keefather?
Aye.
Spruill?
Yes.
Dobree?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Dehaven?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
All right.[1584.13] Keefather?
Aye.
Spruill?
Yes.
Dobry?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
DeHaven?
Aye.
Randall? Medina?
Aye.
All right.
Twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four and the time is nine nineteen P M. The executive session has concluded and council has reconvened into open session. Those persons participating in the executive session were myself, Mayor Rachel Medina, Mayor Pro Tem Lydia De Haven, council members Matthew Keefoffer, Dennis Spruill, Bill Lewis, April Randall, and Robert Dobry, as well as City Manager Drew Sanders and City Attorney Patrick Coleman. No adoption of any proposed policy, position, resolution, rule, regulation, or formal action occurred during the executive session. If any member of council or a member of the public believes that the subject matter of the executive session was not statutory authorized or that the discussions that occurred in executive session strayed from the announced subject matter, please speak up now. Seeing none, we will now move on to agenda item number thirteen, our second session of follow-up questions. Seeing none in the audience, we'll move on to fourteen, our agenda adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobry. Oh, Spruill?
Prior to adjournment, I had a statement to make.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I'm so sorry. Can we have a statement before we vote? I'm so sorry, Dennis. Thank you.
One of our buildings in town has been a blight for the city for quite a bit of time now and it's the old Anasazi Ramada on South Broadway and it's been pointed out to me that they have no running water yet. They have occupants, homeless, and other individuals going into that building and I would like for our health inspector or building inspector to look into that.
Mayor and council, yes, we were aware of it, we're addressing it and we're actually working, and I don't know what the details are on it, but last I knew I was a week ago working with the county health department on that. So we're trying to abate that as we speak. But thank you for bringing that up, councilman, for being aware.
Thank you for being on top of it.
Is that something where C D P H E would get involved too? Or?
Necessarily. On this one, it's more viewed as an abatement.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dennis, for bringing that to attention. Sorry, I missed that.
I wanted to raise a question, put it on, maybe put it on a workshop or get some information regarding a city ordinance that might allow alternative vehicles on the roads. There are some communities that use, that allow side-by-sides or golf carts or other alternative vehicles within their city limits. We see, we all know of a few people who use their lawn mowers right now.
My neighborhood.
But all I'm saying is I'd like to see if we could at least start exploring those opportunities, given our energy situation and alternative things. It might not be a bad idea.
Right.
Right. Maybe even golf carts if some people so do. So anyway, just I'd like to see, explore it or understand what other communities are doing and maybe it could be something we could consider.
Okay. We can certainly work on that. If you can please be patient with us and give us till later in the year, we're really stacked on other business, but we will get on it. I'll get on the list. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. Ready for a vote? To adjourn?
So it was Lewis and Dobry?
Yes. Dobry?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Keefoffer?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Spruill?
Yes.
Haven?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you all.